And welcome to the Cedar Falls Committee, the whole meeting this October 15th, 2018. I'll now call this meeting to order. We have four items on the agenda this evening. We have the Community Main Street, the College Hill Partnership, and Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee presentations, and then bills and payroll. First up is the Community Main Street Director, Carol Lilly, and I have to admit to council staff in the audience who are in the midst of a celebrity. Carol was recently chosen as the Woman of the Year for the Cedar Valley Women in Business Organizations.
Thank you. You just love to embarrass me. Thank you. Hello. Yes, as Mayor Brown said, I'm Carol Lilly from Community Main Street, and thank you for the opportunity to share some exciting things that are happening in the downtown area today. I'm going to provide a little bit of context also in my presentation for those folks that are watching at home. Cedar Falls Community Main Street is a volunteer-driven, economic, a volunteer-driven nonprofit organization established to foster economic vitality and to preserve and promote the historic image and character of the downtown while improving the quality of life in Cedar Falls. We are accredited by the National Main Street Center, Main Street America, and Main Street Iowa. For the past 31 years, we have been transforming the downtown through the Main Street's four-point approach. We work in the areas of design, economic development, promotion, and organization development to preserve our physical environment and our human resources. By contract with the state of Iowa and the city of Cedar Falls, our program of work is focused in the downtown area. Our district encompasses 29 blocks. The Cedar River is our boundary to the north and to the east. The west boundary is Franklin Street, and our southern boundary, we go through the 600 blocks, so our southern boundary is Seventh Street. Today, I'll review the district and Community Main Street successes, challenges, review some of our initiatives, and provide suggestions for consideration during your capital improvement planning. So let's start with the successes. For the past few years, we have made a conscious effort to focus our work district-wide, not just along Main Street. To start this year, we recognized the identity of downtown separate from our organizational identity. We created a brand for the district, and we created the marketing materials, including guidelines, which we have made available to any business or organization for activity, for use to promote their activities that happen in the downtown district. Other successes are noted by the data that we submit to Main Street Iowa every month. We have continued to make great strides since we last presented to you in 2017. There has been a net gain of nine businesses, 52 full-time jobs, private investment over $7 million, six properties sold with the acquisition investment totaling over $8,500,000 in the last year. The city's investment in the levee is not part of the data that is provided, but it is a significant investment in the downtown, and it has provided consumer confidence that has spurred more economic growth. So we commend you and past councils for your foresight into looking and looking forward and increasing the size of the levee, so we wanted to take an opportunity to thank you. The Main Street approach creates an environment where businesses want to locate. For several years, demand for space has exceeded supply, and it isn't just Community Main Street that's been focusing off Main Street. Our developers have started to focus off Main Street as well, too. Just over two weeks ago, our Community Main Street office moved to a new location on East Fourth Street. The Western Home donated the old chamber building to Community Main Street, which we relocated and repurposed. We've come full circle because one of our earlier offices was located in that building many years ago. So we've been able to consolidate our belongings from four different storage areas around the community, and we have a home for our gator, which our volunteers use to water flowers all summer long. There's a project at Washington and First Street, the Arabella Project, which is a mixed-use building currently under construction. It's a $4.5 million project that will add 46 new studio apartments, four two-bedroom units, with the first floor having commercial space on the east end and parking on the west. Another new development along that area is the construction of the 82,000-square-foot Hampton Inn, which is by far one of the most exciting projects in the district. The multimillion-dollar project will have 127 rooms and will provide a complimentary option to those that choose to, to the historic Black Hawk Hotel for visitors who want to make downtown their, their destination. Work to complete the River Place Master Plan continues with construction on the second mixed-use building. Additional retail, restaurant, and residential units will sure to be a draw to that part of the district. Development away from Main Street continues along Clay Street with the project at 604 to provide additional office spaces for Brent Dahlstrom's growing business ventures. Viking Pump is expanding along Bluff Street, and there is also a new retail shop that's off the beaten path along Bluff as well. This destination shop has a charming ambiance near the woods and provides home decor services, so it's a great destination, and again, off Main Street. Creating an environment that attracts businesses and employees include quality-of-life amenities and traffic-building activities. Another success that we've seen in this district was the designation as a cultural and entertainment district, and this was actually a redesignation. The state used to allow designations to last indefinitely, and they now require a renewal every 10 years, and we were one of only seven communities that were able to achieve that Last year, we just received the historic district designation, and this year, working with tourism, we were able to secure wayfinding signage along the highway to direct visitors to downtown, so we were very excited when those went up. Community Main Street hosts over 29 traffic-building events a year. New activities this year included a district-wide scavenger hunt. We scheduled street musicians, and of course, we hosted community favorites like Artapalooza, Fondo Fest, and Holiday Hoop Ledges, to name a few. But the district is not without its challenges. Ongoing maintenance is necessary to maintain our picturesque ambiance and for the safety of our guests. With all the construction underway, it is important to consider how these developments connect with the core of the district. Visually, it's a much different story when you look at Main Street than when you look at the side and parallel streets. Accessible? Oops. Sorry, I'm a little ahead here. There we go. Accessible, available parking continues to be an issue for patrons visiting downtown. The parking study underway will surely help determine some next steps to address, to address those community concerns. As a volunteer-driven program, Community Main Street staff coordinates the vision of our volunteers and their initiatives to improve the district. And our volunteers are busy, and I should note that the information that you have in your packet, I pulled the data from our biennial report, which you'll get probably the next council meeting, so I did update. This is updated information on, on your slide than what you have in your packet, because I wanted to make sure I included the, the full year's accomplishments there. So we have, our volunteers have worked over 5,500 hours since October of last year, and that equates to a dollar value of over $125,000 worth of labor. So we really appreciate our volunteers and all that they do, because we would not have this dynamic thriving, successful downtown without community support. So thank you to our volunteers. Earlier this year, our board and other community stakeholders met to update our strategic plan. We updated our one-sheet, tracking by committee, to focus on activities to meet those strategic goals. District aesthetics, a business-friendly environment, convenience, and parking are key areas that were identified in that strategic planning session. Our annual tasks, such as this presentation, our biennial reporting, and, and other things done by CMS staff are also included and identified on the plan, so we have really tried to formulate and change how we're looking at our activities and make sure that we are continuing to be strategic in, in those activities. So each month, the committees review this, this form, and we look at what we've accomplished and what we need to continue to do to stay true to our mission and to stay true to the goals that are important to the community. As you can see, our commu-, our committees have an aggressive program of work again this year, and we place red checks along each activity as we go, as we complete it, so we can also get that sense of accomplishment, and our volunteers can see just what is happening across the different committees throughout our, our volunteer base. Soon you will be considering capital improvement projects in your goal-setting session. The Community Main Street Board of Directors annually ranks a list of items that they feel are important for downtown, and this year, the electronic survey that we did actually closed this morning, and we included and reached out to our business and property owners to also have input into that process. So later on this month, you will be receiving a formal letter with the ranked list, but these are the items that I have in front of you that are on that list. This is not ranked at this, at this time, but I just wanted to share with you some of those items that were deemed important when you're, when you're making your decisions. Ongoing maintenance, parking, facade grant program renewal, wayfinding signage, the Plaza, Cedar River enhancements and improvements, and incentives for a balanced mix to stay in our, in our area. So those are areas that you'll be hearing more about in the near future. But of course, of utmost importance is the continued implementation of the Master Streetscape Plan. It's the public-private partnership between the city, Cedar Falls Utilities, and Community Main Street. We are in the middle of our details of the district fundraising campaign. As a public-private partnership, we are required to raise funds to help this multi-phase, multi-year project, and we are near, nearly reached the goal that we need to, to accomplish our portion of, of the fees. So we hope that this continues to be a priority for the city as well as for us, as it is for us. So in closing, I would like to leave you with a quote from one of Cedar Falls' most influential and early citizens, Peter Melendez, and I believe this still rings through today. "The city is one of the prettiest, liveliest, thriving, enterprising, prosperous, and healthiest cities in the West. She is the standard of times in all public improvements, advancement, marked generosity, and unusual hospitality." Thank you for your continued support and for your interest in Community Main Street's continued work towards economic development in the downtown area. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone have questions for, or comments? Mr. Green?
Just thinking, Ms. Lilly, just one question for you. Do you see Community Main Street's role and mission changing with the influx of downtown residents and the mixed-use buildings?
It's, oh, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt.
That's fine. Go ahead.
We actually, actually have more residential representation on our board at this time, so it's a conscious effort that we have and we will continue to have to make sure that those resident voices are heard, you know, within our organization. We will also continue to rely on our relationship with the Overman Park Neighborhood Association to make sure that we continue to understand and know what's important to the residents, too. But it definitely is becoming more of a priority the, the more residents that we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, Carol. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Of course. And next, we have Kathryn Sogard, the College Hill Partnership Executive Director. Welcome this evening.
I'm Kathryn Sogard, the Executive Director of the College Hill Partnership. First of all, I would like to thank city staff for helping us arrange this time and arrange this presentation opportunity. Thank you to you, city council, and mayor, for allowing me time to speak with you today. I hope with this presentation to provide information about the College Hill Partnership and its significance within the community. So today, we're going to discuss some challenges of the College Hill Partnership and our goals for advancement. College Hill Partnership's supported efforts and city support crucial to the College Hill District's success and thriving environment. So, what drives a thriving district? We believe what drives a thriving district is eloquently stated in our mission: the promotion of healthy neighborhood businesses and housing enhancement, strengthening collaboration and pride for the district, developing public and private partnerships, and serving as an advocate for addressing concerns within the community. The College Hill District is a diverse district. It's a treasured vibrant neighborhood with a healthy and diverse mix of residents, housing, businesses, and gathering places. Adjacent to the University of Northern Iowa, it, its area boasts unique and innovative recreational, educational, retail, entertainment, and cultural activities. With its diversity of residents and businesses, the College Hill area is a great place to live and a popular place to visit. The College Hill District has seen immense success due to the investment made by all stakeholders in the district, including the generous support of the city of Cedar Falls. With an ever-changing environment, our work as leaders in the College Hill area is a never-ending mission. Our focus on promotion and revitalization must remain to ensure the prosperity and health of the College Hill District. As the College Hill District continues to grow and evolve, we face new challenges, but with these challenges, we are confronted with an opportunity to improve the College Hill neighborhood and to build stronger, a stronger, more unified community. The major challenges our district currently faces are: a balance between owner-occupied and rental homes; searingly park improvements; building and retaining a passionate community of advocates for the College Hill neighborhood that includes recruitment and retaining of volunteers; encouraging new development and maintaining original character of the district. Our focus this year has been to provide resources and action plans to promote the College Hill District by involving all stakeholders within our unique area. By supporting events and business development, providing desired neighborhood services, and investing in the beautification and care of the College Hill District, the College Hill Partnership is making, making a large impact in promoting a thriving region in Cedar Falls. Our events and business development committees are supporting economic growth in the College Hill District. With over 400 people employed on the hill, we know that continuing our work is vital to providing jobs within, for the overall economic well-being of Cedar Falls. Developing events that showcase our distinct district helps support economic growth to our over 30 College Hill businesses. This year, we hosted and supported events such as the Panther Block Party, complete with pizza tasting contest, the You &amp; I Homecoming Window Painting, which unfortunately got canceled, but we are excited to award a winner later on this week, our Third Annual Oktoberfest, and Holiday Tree Lighting and Window Painting Contest, Neighborhood Picnic, Hilleboration of Thanks, a customer appreciation event. We also support other long-running College Hill events, such as the College Hill Arts Festival, Mohair Pairs Outdoor Indie Fair, and the College Hill Farmers Market. Along with the variety of events, the CHP has cultivated a College Hill gift certificate to use at most College Hill businesses. It further promotes the College Hill District. The last focus of this committee has been developing relationships between the College Hill business owners, as well as other organizations, to create long-lasting events. We have enjoyed partnerships with the Friends of Peterson Plaza, Community Main Street, College Hill Farmers Market, and the University of Northern Iowa, and of course, the city of Cedar Falls. These are vital to making our, our events successful. Our Neighborhood Services Committee volunteers have focused on the needs and concerns of our residents. Needs and concerns such as searingly park renovations, College Hill Neighborhood Picnic, increasing communication between the neighborhood and the College Hill Partnership Board, providing assistance and support for our Events and Business Development Committee in the form of volunteers, and us being a strong voice for the neighborhood when it comes to changes and challenges of our district. Our Beautification Committee works around the year to ensure the cleanliness and aesthetics challenges that arise in our district. Our Beautification Committee has developed plans to incorporate more green space areas in our business part of our district, ensure cleanliness, care and development of current green spaces within our district, and working closely with the Friends of Peterson Plaza to create an aesthetically pleasing public area located at the bottom of the hill. We would like to extend our gratitude for the city's services and funding that has contributed to mo-, much of our success over the last few years. Our success has been influenced by the strong approach taken by the city's public safety organizations, your continued support of economic development by providing economic betterment grants, and by the continued advisory support that the College Hill Partnerships receives from many city employees. Without all of these elements, the College Hill District and the city of Cedar Falls would likely see a decline in the economic growth and overall well-being. Since May of this year, the CHP has spent over 500 volunteer hours working to better the hill and drive economic development, community, and advocacy for the College Hill District. Our volunteers of the past year have worked to care for the aesthetics of the hill, offer unique event opportunities, and develop a growing system of communication with all stakeholders that are invested within the College Hill District. One way that we do that is through social media, and we'd love for you to join us on social media and follow all of our events. This is an exciting time for us in the College Hill District, with many developments, additions, and changes being made to our district. We are excited for our bright future. In facing future challenges, we look forward to your continued support and input to help promote a thriving College Hill District. Without the support of city staff, city council, and the mayor, our future would not look nearly as bright. Thank you for your continued support of the College Hill Partnership and the College Hill Neighborhood District.
Thank you, Kathryn.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments for Kathryn? Mr. Green?
Just Sogard, I'm just curious if you have any neighborhoods or other, in other cities, college campus cities, that are examples for you or things you get inspiration from that maybe we, as a city, should be looking at for ideas as well?
We have, when we talk about other communities within our area, we haven't really focused on the other, the other areas. I think we've looked towards Iowa City a little bit, and we're hoping to look more at Iowa City and Ames in how they make that balance between a neighborhood and a college area, but we use a lot of inspiration from Community Main Street, but I think that's something that the partnership could do, is look at other communities that are similar to Cedar Falls.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Green?
I don't know. I know there was some movement on Peterson Plaza. Are there some specific plans at this point?
Sure.
Status of that?
Sure. We have worked with the city to develop some plans. We saw a few preliminary plans. The partnership has seen them, and so has the Peterson Plaza Committee, and we weren't quite happy with what we got back, so we have made some suggestions to how we would like that to change, and we're looking forward to seeing a few more drafts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Last up, Mr. White and potential company for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee presentation.
This one right there. Thank you, David, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council, and city staff. As noted in the introduction, my name is Roger White. I'm Chair of your Cedar Falls Bicycle, Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and I'm appreciative of the opportunity to come and make a presentation to you again. I do this a couple of times a year, the way it seems, and always seem to have a good I have up on the slides most of what we're going to talk about, and so you can follow along. I think you probably have received a copy of this also electronically. But our mission statement, we've had this mission statement for as long as we've existed, has not been modified, and it's to improve the quality of life in Cedar Falls through the increase of safe walking, bicycling, as viable means of transportation and physical activity. And we have a number of goals. These have not changed. Implement the 2009 Bike Plan, that Bike Network Plan that was adopted by the council. Encourage more pedestrian and bicycle transportation. Engage the community in seeking greater ownership of pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. Advocate for pedestrian and bicycle accommodations in a new development or renewal of existing infrastructure. Identifying barriers that impede safe pedestrian and bicycle use and seek modification, and seek pedestrian and bicycle-friendly community status for Cedar Falls. We still have not found that there is anybody that does pedestrian-friendly in the same way that there's a group that does bicycle-friendly, but we're still looking. Our, our goals, we just talked about, let me advance here. Now, why do we want to strive to make Cedar Falls walker and bicycle-friendly? Good question, and we'll try to answer it for you. According to the World Health Organization, the obesity is a serious health concern, and that is completely preventable. New data that we have, Iowa is now the fourth most obese state in the country, and that's a sobering statistic, I think. 36.4% of Iowa's population is now considered obese. That's up from 20.9% in 2000, so just 18 years ago. Causes of obesity include several things, but one of them is lack of physical activity. 30 minutes of moderate to rigorous exercise or physical activity a daily, daily is recommended in order to maintain good health. More than 30 medical conditions are associated with obesity, including high blood pressure, high cholesterol, diabetes, heart disease, stroke, gallbladder disease, osteoarthritis, sleep apnea, and respiratory problems, certain cancers, including endometrial breast and colon cancer. And as you look at that list, you can see that it includes several conditions that require extensive and costly medical treatment to manage. Looking at Blackhawk County-only data, and I have an update on what's on the slide, that when we first produced this, the data we had, Blackhawk County residents were 29% obese. New data that I got after we submitted this last Wednesday, it's now 31% in Blackhawk County of the citizens are considered obese. 78% of county adults, and this was a survey done by the Health Department, do not get the minimum physical activity needed for good health, and 2/3 of the folks, so that would overlap many of those 78%, I'm sure, say they would like to get more physical activity if they could, but there are a number of complicating and preventing factors. So continuing answering the question, why makes Cedar Falls walker and bicycle less friendly? National research shows that as walking and bicycling increase, the percentage of adults with diabetes, obesity, hypertension decreases. That's, in other words, there's an inverse relationship. As one goes up, the other goes down. International research shows that walking and bicycling are linked to reduce risk of heart disease, cancer, and early death. Access to convenient physical activity resources is essential for greater use, including quality interconnected sidewalks, on-street bicycle accommodations, as well as recreational trails, which of course, we have quite a few of those. It's been kind of a struggle the last few years with construction, that we keep them, well, construction and flooding, that we keep them operational, but we do have the trails out there. Cedar Falls, as you know, has been a Blue Zone community. It has a complete streets policy, a bicycle plan, and each of these challenges us to incorporate more physical activity into our daily lives. So continuing answering the question, why makes Cedar Falls walker and bicycle less friendly? The health benefits come of regular physical activity. like to get more physical activity if they could, but there are a number of complicating and preventing factors. So continuing answering the question, why makes Cedar Falls walker and bicycleless friendly? National research shows that as walking and bicycling increase, the percentage of adults with diabetes, obesity, hypertension decreases. That's, in other words, is an inverse relationship. As one goes up, the other goes down. International research shows that walking and bicycling are linked to reduce risk of heart disease, cancer, and early death. Access to convenient physical activity resources is essential for greater use, including quality interconnected sidewalks, on-street bicycle accommodations, as well as recreational trails, which, of course, we have quite a few of those. It's been kind of a struggle the last few years with construction, that we keep them, well, construction and flooding, that we keep them operational, but we do have the trails out there. Cedar Falls, as you know, has been a Blue Zone community. It has a complete streets policy, a bicycle plan, and each of these challenges us to incorporate more physical activity into our daily lives. So continuing answering the question, why makes Cedar Falls walker and bicycleless friendly? The health benefits come of regular physical activity as follows. Increased cardiovascular fitness, increased muscle strength and flexibility, improved joint mobility, decreased stress levels, improved posture and coordination, strength in the bones, decreased fat, body fat levels, prevention or management of disease, and reduced anxiety and depression, all of which would be good things. Now, the next slide is going to be hard for you to see much, but this is in better formats, but this is the, the network that has been adopted by the city council, and it includes the existing trails in red, and then the yellow and the blue are bike accommodations on streets, either solid lines if they are already implemented, or dashed lines or dotted lines if they are in the proposed category. There currently is not a pedestrian plan that would be comparable to this. However, there is a group working through InterCog doing a metro pedestrian master plan. Our committee has participated with that. I've sat on the committee. We've had a number of updates from that group. Cody Lesman at InterCog is the key person on that, and our committee has, has been involved in the process. We've reviewed the progress and made recommendations in that process. Hopefully, by the next time I report to you, a year from now, we'll have a pedestrian master plan that we can put up like the, like the Bike Network. The next slide is our priorities as a committee for the next year, and some of these are from, similar to last year, some of them are new, and we've changed the rank ordering a little bit as conditions have changed. But our first priority for the upcoming year is to adopt and amend the bike ordinance. We have both in there because there is currently a bike ordinance, but it's way old, and it needs to be updated. And I'm going to go into more detail in each of these in just a minute, but I'm going to go through the list first. So the second one is network signage and markings for the bicycle network. The third is Cedar Heights Bike Lane Concept that we'd like to explore as kind of a pilot project. And the next is adopting policy on use of may-use-full lane as the method for marking the network for the, for the bike network. The fifth one, we have a proposal for Grand Boulevard extending a trail up there. The sixth is secondary and primary education and coordinating that with the schools. The seventh is education outreach to the community generally. That would be basically adults. And then the last one is a bicycle pedestrian program staff person, and I'll talk a little more about that in just a moment. Okay, so the first one, our primary or most important for us recommendation is to adopt and amend the bike ordinance. The Iowa Bike Coalition came up with a model ordinance for cities to look at for bicycles within the past year. I think it was last winter it was first surfacing. We have started, our committee has started with that as the starting point. We're reviewing that and moving, and merging that with the existing bicycle ordinance that the city has on the books, going back to 1971, and that's found in Chapter 26 of the Court of Ordinances. And we're going to come forward with a complete redraft of the bicycle ordinance for the city to look at. We hope to have that done maybe at our next meeting in November, and then it'll go to city staff for their review, and, and through that process, that you're very familiar with how that works, I'm sure, probably more familiar than I am. Our second priority is the marking and signage of the network. We, this is basically a repeat of last year. There are three streets that we believe are essential, that they be, that they're on the map right now as designated bicycle network on paper. They're just not physically marked out there on the street. That would be Fourth Street, 12th Street, and Eighteenth Street. It is marked now as far as college, but we're wanting it, suggesting it, that it be continuation of that marking from college out to Hudson Road. And then in addition to that, there are some streets that have painted charos on the street, but they don't have any signage to accompany it, and so we're, we're recommending that as a second part of this, that the signage be added along with the painted charos. And the painted charos are problematic for, for a couple of reasons. Number one, there's time and, and material that goes into painting those charos, and then secondly, they don't last very long. They wear off through the winter. And so when the bike season starts in April or May, most of the charos are pretty much all invisible. It seems from my experience that that repainting, if it's done, is done during the summer, June, July timeframe, and so we have a period of time where the charos really aren't doing much. They get done in the middle of the summer, and then, of course, winter comes along and they, and they disappear again. But there are three streets that have charos, but no signage. That's Boulder Drive, College Street, and State Street. None of those are new to the bike network. It's just a matter of getting the bike network actually implemented out on the street instead of just on paper like it's been for, well, since 2009. Our third concept, third recommendation, is what we would consider to be a first-time pilot project here. Cedar Heights Drive is going to be reconstructed in the next year. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Cedar Heights Drive is going to be reconstructed in the next year from Rainbow Drive to Pleasant Drive. As near as we can tell, that's a 31-foot street, and there's no parking on both sides of it. It's a somewhat of a hilly segment, and so what we're recommending is that there be a bike lane installed on the uphill portion, and then a charo or a shared lane on the downhill portion. If you take the 31-foot street, it takes about two foot of curb on each side. You take that out, you've got 27-foot left. Take a five-foot bike lane, you have 22 feet left. That makes two very generous 11-foot traffic lanes, so this could be done. This adaptation is used in other communities. I personally have experienced it in Raleigh and Durham, North Carolina, and, and it does work. We proposed something similar to this for 12th Street a year ago that was deemed to not work because of the parking. Well, Cedar Heights Drive doesn't have a parking problem, so we think we can, we can make that work. Our next objective or our next project is to make the, the city as its policy that if it's a bike network street, that the way that it be handled is one consistent way. Right now, we have really at least three different ways that the bike networks, streets that are designated are designated. Some of them have the Diamond Share the Road signs. That's the yellow one that you see on the slide with a Share the Road sign underneath of it, and, and with that configuration is the painted charo that you can see on the lower left-hand corner of the, of the slide. Some streets just have the charos and no signs. Some streets have, may use the full lane sign. That's the upper left, the white background with the black lettering, and we know from the past that when you paint those charos on the street, that is, that creates a maintenance concern. It wears off, and it has to be at least annually refurbished. So what we're recommending is that the city use for its bicycle network signage, the may use the full lane concept. It's out there on a few streets right now. That could be with or without the charo. We're, you know, we're, we're somewhat, I guess, less precise about the charo because it, I mean, a charo is fine as long as it's kept in, in, in good working order, but frequently there are several months of the year where they pretty much disappear. This is, I think, a safety step that we could take. To me, and to several of us on the committee, the idea of a charo is it communicates to motorists that the motors, motor vehicle or the car, truck, and the bicycle can be in the lane at the same time, and that puts too close proximity. And so by encouraging may use the full lane, we think that will start to encourage the motorists to pass in the opposite lane or the adjoining lane, and that will create more, more space separation. And then also, if the charos are going to be painted, if that, that's the decision the city wants to make, there's going to have to be a commitment to keep them in better working order than we think they have been so far. So that's our recommendation. The next one, the fifth one, is right now, the network plan, it's not signed, but the paper map shows that Rainbow Drive is the, is the east-west bike network. We don't think Rainbow Drive is suitable for most bicyclists. It's not a comfortable street to ride. I do it occasionally, but I don't think it'll ever become comfortable enough for people to want to use it. Well, parallel with Rainbow Drive is Grand Boulevard, and so we're suggesting that the Bike Network east-west route be moved over to Grand Boulevard, but the problem with Grand Boulevard is it terminates at River Hills School. But if you look at the slide up there, we're proposing that that area that we believe that right-of-way is already the city's in that designated or that space between the end of Grand Boulevard on, on the west end and where it picks up again on the Waterloo end, could be converted to a trail and move the traffic, bikes, bike pedestrian traffic through on that. It's already used, as you could look on the left side at the lower end, this is an actual photograph of what's out there. You can see that little cow path? It's already used as an ad hoc trail. It's just not really suitable because, like a cow path, it gets dug deeper and deeper, and if it's after rainy weather, it actually holds water. It's not suitable for, for either pedestrian or bike use through there. And so that's our, our fifth recommendation. The sixth one and the seventh are similar to last year. The sixth one is continuing our education efforts for primary and secondary education. Children benefit from safe cycling and safe walking instruction. We have jointly done some activities with the school system, bike rodeos and bike to school, safe routes to school, and things like that. We can, we'll continue that. At times, there are some expenses come, come up, particularly for bike rodeos that aren't covered by the school, so it would be nice to have a budget line item that would be available for this, so we would request that again, and it's a way that the city and the, and the schools can work together, plus it's also a requirement of bike-friendly community. The seventh one is what we basically consider general education outreach for the adult community. We use the currents right now and also the cable channel to do programs and presentations. We've also made presentations at civic groups, and we would continue that. We envision, envision at least doing as much as we are, perhaps expanding. Adult education for pedestrians and bicycling behavior is important for safety, and it's also, as I mentioned before, a bike-friendly community requirement. And the last one, we've now moved it to our last priority, and that is a coordinator specifically assigned for bicycle pedestrian coordination. We've moved it to a lower priority because it was a high priority a year ago. We felt we needed that for the application for bike-friendly community. We have made that application, made it in August, and we're in that limbo right now, waiting until we, we get the word back from the League of American Bicyclists if we're going to be renewed and at what level. If we are renewed, I would, I would suspect it would be again at the bronze. I don't see that we have made enough progress that we would qualify for silver. And so if we win, you know, if we are, if we're awarded bike-friendly, we're good for four more years. I think this last priority will be something then that will be more future-oriented. If we don't get bike-friendly community renewed this year, we'll have to make a decision about whether we renew in another year or try for another year or two, and then this will be essential then. That's one of the things that we know will be holding us up, since we don't have a designated facilitator or coordinator for the bike and pedestrian program. So here's a brief slide of the American League of, American League of Bicyclists Program for Bike Friendly.
Needs to be brief, Roger. We've got about two minutes left for you, please.
I'll wrap it up right now. This, this is, is the outline. We've had it since 2009. We lost it at the end of last December. We reapplied, as I said. We're waiting for the answer. The, it sets a national standard for how communities can make themselves more bike-friendly, and there are seven other communities in Iowa, six other brons, plus Iowa City is silver. Those other brown ones are Ames, Bettendorf, University Heights, Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, and Coralville. And then the last slide is the fan you've seen before. Those are the requirements for bike-friendly community, and it's too hard to see on that way, but we can get it in another format if you want to look at the, at the strands or the elements that make up the bike-friendly community standard grading process, and that's the end of our program. Are there questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for Mr. White? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, the final item is a motion to approve bills and payroll.
So move.
Second. Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. This adjourns now our committee, the whole meeting. We'll adjourn till the top of the hour for our regular city council meeting. Thank you.